I'd like to call this many the order that we're going to pledge our flag of allegiance in the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right. Spread out here a little bit, but appreciate everybody who's joining us and had the agenda you all had a chance to review on the motion to approve the so we motion to Mr. Anzley, second is to Howard, give a further discussion on favor. Dallas. All right, you also had a chance to review the minutes of our regular paper meeting as well as the call meeting. Right, first, I'm going to motion to approve their demand, so
Senator.
Motion Dr. Budge, second is Blair, give a further discussion on favor. Dallas. All right, brings us down to your special recognition.
Good.
A little differently, different type of recognition, but we're going to try to do the best we can. So, Dr. Edwards is going to come in first and recognize the valedictorian, salutatorian, star student, and star teacher. We'll call those in kind of at the time. They're all special students. And then we'll go from there and she will be the first to recognize her 2020 retirees as Teacher of the Year and support person. I do not have the Teacher of the Year or Support Person. A Person of the Year and President of the Society. You have a fantastic performance on the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, bud. I'm doing my usual. Wanted to go ahead and begin with, we're going to have a student who just wants to be joining us right now as well. But wanted to begin by introducing Michael Peters this evening. Just doing right there. He is, Michael is our valedictorian. And I want to let y'all know that he is working extra hard during this pandemic time because they didn't have internet at their house. And so he has really had to go above and beyond to make sure that everything gets turned in. But wanted to tell you a little bit about him. And Michael is a student who has pursued a lot of our IB courses. He has also been an accelerated placement scholar with distinction. He is a Georgia Certificate of Merit recipient. He was a Morton County High School Junior Marshall. That means proceeding in the top 10% of his class last year. He's a National Arts Society member, qualified for the Georgia Seal of Our Literacy, which he will receive from his graduation. And that means that he has participated in a high average in rigorous world language classes. He is a Hispanic Scholarship Fund Spouter. He's also a member of the Morton County High School Student Council and Morton County High School International Club. My most favorite thing about Michael is that as student class of 2020 for ourselves, when we were really having to work through the ins and outs of homecoming, which y'all will all remember most fantastic this year, Michael led the way. And I had said it to y'all, I have no idea who this little son is, but I love him. And so Michael, if you want to name his, I can't sleep. He's a leader, that's awesome. So, but he has really set the bar very high for leadership in that area. He's also the president of Morton County International Club, the Polsera Project event. But wait, there's more. He is a member of a club soccer team, the Atlanta Fire United Soccer Association. He also was on our high school soccer team, high school cross country team, high school symphonic band, high school bands choir, and a member of the Georgia Youth Assembly. So, as you can tell, Michael's had a very strong career with us and is also, he's a very smart man, but he is also a wonderful person. And so, Michael, if you would, would you please tell them what you're planning on doing next year and introduce the fantastic people who are with you?
Well, I'll start by introducing the people that are with me. This is my dad and my mom. And I just owe a lot, just everything that I've accomplished to them. They've just given me outstanding support and they've given me just outstanding advice and just telling me that I can do anything I want. And I know I'm really grateful to my mom and dad, both of them for instilling in me the fear of God and the love for God because I feel like I can be here doing anything without, without God in my life. But, um, next year, so my plan is to, well, I'm going to be attending at Stanford University in the fall, studying chemistry with plans to apply to medical school after that.
Great.
Well, Michael is definitely someone that you would want to be a physician. So, um, we are so proud of you and so grateful for all that you have contributed to Morton County High School. We're going to have some fun as we graduate, so please. So, would you still want to do a point or how does that?
Someone come up here and Michael, you come over here and also front board over here where I want. Or is able, uh, I thought, yeah, I'm supposed to come with you. And I can certainly see from all the stuff you're involved with, I, I understand why you don't stay. You don't have time. We're good as this. Because I have a train back. I'll take two more, so before I start. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. All right. Congratulations.
Natalie, you ready? Yeah, I guess. Put it right there. You're just going to sit right there. Our next person is the reigning current chairperson. This is Natalie Rogers. She is one of our co-saluditorians. And so Natalie, I'm going to unmute you. Natalie is one of our co-saluditorians. She has also pursued a lot of very rigorous classwork. She did a lot of IB work during junior year and this past year has been doing roles in math courses for Morton Tech and has done a lot of work there. She's a National Merit Scholarship Seminologist. She's an IB Scholar with Distinction, Georgia Certificate of Merit. The 2019 swim team, highest points in various class awards, including the highest grade in IB chemistry, IB physics, chemistry, and essentials of I T E D. She also participates in Walton Wave Swimming, practicing four days a week. She's a member of our academic bowl, the swim team, which she was the only one that we had make at the state this year. And a member of our National Honor Society. Most uniquely this year, she has also served as one of our lab tech interns through our science department and did a incredible amount of work there. And Natalie, I'll go ahead and turn you up and you want to tell them where you will be going to school next year?
Um, I will be attending Lake College next year in the Florida Garden.
Okay. It's weird looking. And so, again, Natalie is a very, a very serious dead body that we have so enjoyed watching her this year. So, all right, our next salutatorian. You're all done? You think? Um. Our other salutatorian is Mason Autry. Mason is an IB Scholar with Honors, Bull IB student, Junior Marshall, received the Georgia Certificate of Merit, has been a member of the marching band for four years, a member of the swim team, member of the National Honor Society, member of the academic bowl team, received two I V and better on the Latin one and Latin two national Latin exams. Mason is a very kind young man, great sense of humor. We really enjoyed having him. So basically, if you would, you could introduce your votes and then also tell them about your plans for next year.
All right, so that is my dad, Brandon Autry. He works at S K C Inc. in Covington. And that's my mom, who was a nurse at St. Mary's Hospital.
Your mom had a name?
Holly Autry. Sorry. Uh, I'm planning on attending E G A at the College of Engineering.
Congratulations to you. If y'all want to do another show, then you'll just come right up here.
What's next? I haven't discovered. Yes.
Everybody's going to criticize you for not saying a vote. They will wait. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We didn't do it.
Sweet, you're here.
All right, our next, the next student that we'll be honoring is our star student. And now remember that the star student is the student who earned the highest score on a single test day for the S N T. And they must also be in the top 10% of their class. And so Will Pascal is our star student this year. Will is a mathematics major, was mathematics major at the Governor's Honors Program. He was the drum captain for marching band for two years. He was the captain of the cross country team for two years and captain of the swimming team for one year. He's also been a member of the National Honor Society for three years. He has selected P T Gutten as his star teacher, so I'm going to allow him to, to speak to why he made that decision. And then also, I'm talking about which one is next.
All right, sounds good. Well, she said, my name is Will Pascal. And so P T is my star teacher and I selected her for quite a many reasons. But, um, so I consider myself pretty lucky to know at such a young age, you know, what I love to do. And as geeky as it sounds, that's mathematics. But I wouldn't be saying that to you today if it weren't for P T. So, I know that if I hadn't ever met P T, I'd be in an extremely different position than I am right now. And I could honestly go on for hours just talking about, you know, telling little stories here and there about all this stuff. But, yeah, so, uh, P T has meant a lot to me, so, yeah, thank you.
My chance to rebut that. Um, it's, your passion for math would have taken you through whomever you met. And I appreciate, you know, the, all of the opportunities I've had to mentor you in any way to, to help. And, I mean, we've been doing things this summer with this, or not this summer yet, it feels like it, but this spring with this Georgia Tech distance learning class and trying to learn some things together about, you know, shoot, stuff that I did many, many, many years ago. And it's just, he's helped me to really find the passion again in a more of a way. It never was lost, but just to make it broader and to see that there, there are kids out there who, like me in school, you know, really love certain things and are nerdy about it and it's okay. And it's just, it's such a great thing and that he knows what he wants to do. Not many kids know what they want to do. He's just, you know, toss ideas around. We've had hours and hours of conversations. And it's just, it's been a blessing, you know, I just, not to take you all out of this, but this is my son too, you know. It's really the work, yeah. We've kind of raised him together, me and the, the math aspect, but so much more in life too, where he has questions that sometimes it's hard for the other parents and such. And it's, it's really cool that he's.
No, it's impossible to get parents with that.
Yeah, but it's, it's awesome.
But, you know, with P T, um, can I tell you the number of hours I've just spent, you know, digging into the material and trying to figure out the why? It's pretty much everything you see on the text. It's like some dude or woman somewhere was, you know, sitting there trying to figure out a problem on paper. And so, it's really cool to try to figure that out. And she's really the first math teacher I've ever had to be able to tell me the why, you know, and to where, like, I really get why, what we're doing, what we're doing here. And I couldn't be more thankful for that. And, you know, so. So, uh, this happened actually a couple of months ago, the first day that we were out of school. I got the word that I was selected for a Bull Ride Scholarship to go to Jordan Tech and study mathematics. And so I'll be attending there next year among twenty other high school students from the state of Georgia in a cohort, as they call it. And as I've heard, there have been three other people from Morton County that have actually gotten the same award. So, it's pretty cool.
I mean, want to talk to those people?
Um, yeah, so, wait.
You're talking about my dad.
Okay. So, this is my dad, Dr. Pascal. You guys call me that. That's my mom.
Michelle.
That's Michelle. So, yep, these are parents and teacher.
We funded it.
Well, I have to say too, that Will and Natalie, like we talked about, they've been doing all of it through Georgia Tech. And so where they did that was at our media center. And as you, it was never failed. And as I came up Main Street during that class, he would be sitting in one of our rooms right there with the world, working and just working and just working. And the fact that he could be that focused and, and just to be totally absorbed into what they're doing, it's one of those things that you walk by new gear. So, we're going to miss seeing you in that little room, but know that you're going to be doing big things, bigger places.
Can I, can I say two things, please, or a couple? Um, first thing I want to say is how appreciative I am as a parent for, that we in Morton County have chosen to give the kids the opportunity to do distance line. I know that that was, that was not available to us, to your kids, and I don't think it was available to you all. It has been an enormous opportunity for Will specifically. We've recognized part of that tonight. But I, I want to encourage, you know, anything we can do to stimulate that because after seeing him and some other kids take advantage of this, it's an, it's an enormous advantage for these kids going forward. Because, you know, he's made a couple of mistakes as a young college kid under our guidance that we were able to map out and work through that he won't have, hopefully will learn by and, and won't have to experience that as a freshman now. And when it really counts. And that, that's a really neat thing to have. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge is Will had referenced the other three students, two of the two little kids and Sam Jones. And then Will, and that's been in the last nine years for this Stanford Scholars Program at Tech. And I, I, to the best of our knowledge, y'all need to look and see how many high schools have achieved that level in the past decade.
That's my thought.
That's pretty remarkable because you're only talking about twenty kids in the whole state every year. So, I think that, I mean, well done, well done.
Yes. Get a picture.
I had all of those kids.
She had a polish, man, that's awesome.
You're going to have a lot to do in the 2020. Sixty. Pretty good one, son.
Okay. Thank you so much. Roll right into the retirees. And again, it's kind of interesting not to but I know that you will recognize these names and fortunately know who these people are. Our first retiring is Connie Green. She's retiring after being all thirty-four years at Morton County High School. She's a legend and a fixture. As a class, as graduate of the class of nineteen eighty, we're actually fortunate that she came back to us. And I didn't know until today that she actually started out as a special ed parapro in March of nineteen eighty-six. And we were going back and forth with some unique things about them. And so she earned her master's degree in ninety-two while she was praying over Saint Brian. And then she earned her E D S in ninety-six when she was praying with Jordan. And so I'm not sure if she didn't pursue any other degrees for any other reasons. But it's remarkable to, to do those graduate classes as a mom. Uh, she has sponsored the freshman class, the National Honor Society, F C A, Jaden Cheerleaders for two years and varsity cheerleaders for a year. She created the Zumba Club. A lot of people don't necessarily know about, but we have heard through great bond often that she is one heck of an instructor and drives you just as hard in that class as she does in math. She enjoyed over twenty-eight years working at the prom. And the yearbook was dedicated to her in twenty nineteen. And though she's seen many changes during her tenure with us, she says she just always moves and in go with the flow. And so we're very grateful to Connie for her service and what else she has provided. And I will say, when people come back to the school to visit or to tour, they often ask, where's your friend? So, I think that's, that's very important. Lisa Hamilton is our next retiree. She is known around our school for being a lover and supporter of the arts. She taught drama at one point. She's primarily been an English teacher and IB coordinator for years. She's a lover of reading and language, a band mom at Chaperone. She was Teacher of the Year in twenty twelve. She was the star teacher in two thousand nine, IB coordinator for six years. Has been the academic bowl coach for over ten years and was the one act play director for fifteen plus years. She's also served on our H P P L C and represented us at a grade based learning conference. And so Lisa's that person in your building who shows up and wants to be involved and she wants to help in every way that she can. She's very good about thinking about the whatabouts and howabouts. And so we're, we're really going to miss that about her. She has walked hundreds of thousands of steps. I know that she'll continue to do that while she's retired. Our next retiree is Jeffrey Rousher. He has spent his entire teaching career in Georgia. He can proudly boast of three hundred and eighty-five sick leave days that were applied to his credible service. And he is certain his wife of thirty-six years is willing, able, and ready to kill him after this quarantine. He is learning a more convincing way that his personality is not designed to stay inside. He, by his wife's annoyance, is the CEO and founding father of A B H T and he cannot sit still at all. Rousher's bands have received superior ratings in marching, symphonic, and jazz band for over thirty-eight years. His bands have traveled to several invited music festivals such as Gatlinburg, Tennessee, the Hall of Fame Bowl, which, and they performed at Vince Dooley's Final Game, performed for President George Bush at Marietta High School. His Morton County High School bands have traveled to Orlando, Tampa, Hawaii, Canada. And the Bulldog Band awaits safe travel permissions to fulfill the invitation to the St. Patrick's Day Music Festival Parade in Dublin, Ireland in March of twenty twenty-one. He enjoys having been chosen Teacher of the Year at Salem High School in nineteen ninety-four, East Jackson High School in twenty-ten, and Morton County High School in twenty-fourteen. During his career, also being Assistant Teacher of the Year in both Rockdale and Morton County. He has very little interest in retirement since he does not pitch night golf or do home repairs. So he is certainly going to rely on continuing student leadership academies for bands, sports teams, and other student leadership training opportunities. He is not finished with his passion for educating kids. And is very appreciative for all the opportunity that he has had in Morton County. Our next retiree is Carl Scott. Carl, Carl Scott and his family moved to Madison in nineteen ninety-seven when he relocated here to work at Lake of Pony. They chose Madison for many reasons, but the number one factor was the excellent public school system. The great experiences of family led him to make a career change into teaching. First as a middle school science teacher in Athens, but then the last twelve years at Morton High School teaching biology, earth systems, and environmental science. And he has certainly seen some changes. He started out in what they called the colleges of learning, the temporary classrooms of the newly organized freshman academy, which were the parking lot where our beautiful competition gym now stands. Now, as he's leaving, he sees the realization of the vision and tradition that first brought him to Madison. Some of his accomplishments, he was instrumental in bringing Darius Weems to Morton County High School, which led to our students playing a key role in the Darius Goes West nationwide campaign for handicapped access and fighting Duchenne muscular dystrophy. Snake Day in the freshman academy was a wildlife exposition initiated and funded. And he conducted several memorable fall break camping trips to Sapporo Island and brought everyone back unhaunted. He became a coach for the academic bowl team with Miss Hamilton and has worked with some of the most remarkable students. They have been proud to lead them to watch some Excel against best students in Georgia at academic bowl competitions and on W S T V, W S B T V's IQ. He says that my twelve years at Morton County High School have been wonderful. We all know this place is special and I hope no one ever takes that for granted. But I'm honoring, we share as educators, the one Morgan ties that bond our community together and the opportunities we all have had to make a difference. I am grateful. So that was for Mr. Scott. Did you want me to go ahead and go into our Teacher of the Year? Our Teacher of the Year this year is Alec Johnson. He has been at Morton County High School for all eight years of his senior career. And he actually began the flipped classroom concept seven years ago. So, all this stuff that we've been doing with Alec, he's been trained for his entire career and has done a fantastic job. In the Teacher of the Year nominations, this is, why don't you read an excerpt from that? He goes all in and is an expert in the field. He's pulled students to an extremely high level of expectation while simultaneously creating a fun and interactive environment. Not only is he now an exceptional teacher who works very hard, pre prep, working, etc., but he is also an exemplary father. In addition, he has received numerous honors outside of relative day to day job. Most recently, Alec was one of only twenty-eight teachers selected by S B T I to work on NASA's Soviet telescope. In conclusion, we believe that the Teacher of the Year should never be a popularity contest. To establish the merit of a candidate, we must try to imagine if the candidate was not at our school. Would there be a huge void? Absolutely. Mr. Johnson makes a huge difference in the lives of our students and our faculty in general. And we, we refer to him as a nerd that he embraces and loves, but also he's just very extra. Our Support Person of the Year this year is Dee Cooper. She's a reporter for Menchus Hill Mary, but we know it's Dee. And she is one of the, she's a parapro that works in our media center. And she is the very definition of one Morgan and is an important part of our media center and the heart of our building. She does her absolute best to accommodate for every teacher and student that asks for help. She is a ray of sunshine on Main Street every day of the week. The students love her and they can't wait to see her each and every day. She cares about them all and she loves to help those struggling students who could use the help in the arena. She also has three of her own children at Morton County High School. She's awesome. And is involved in many of their sports activities, football, basketball, wrestling, band, chorus, guard, rugby, track, and more. She is a team mom for what seems like most every sport activity and you can always count on her to help when help is needed. And she's a great asset to Morton County High School. So, Dee Cooper was very excited that she received that recognition this year. Okay.
You really wish we could have a partner.
But they're watching, you can't wait. I will go and get this there. Thank you very much. Look at Larson. I don't know. John, can you start with retiring? Now, we have three teachers retiring from elementary school. The first is Miss Leslie Turner. Miss Turner began her teaching career in nineteen eighty-eight in Walton County. And there she taught at Monroe Elementary. She taught fourth grade for eleven years. She then moved to Morton County and began Morton County Elementary School where she spent the last twenty-one years teaching third grade English language charts and serving as a deputy supportive teacher. When I think of Miss Turner, I say that she is an advocate for students. She lives out students first. She goes above and beyond to support her students and find interventions to help them to be successful. She says that COVID nineteen may have blocked her of all these special blasts with her students and colleagues, but the memories etched in her heart of all the children can never be taken.
but the memories etched in her heart of all the children can never be taken. Our next retiree is Nancy Lynn. Nate began her career in education as a paraprof in the Clark County Schools. She worked there from nineteen eighty six to nineteen eighty nine. She then went back to school to complete her degree in elementary education. And after completing her undergraduate degree, she accepted a position in Walton County as a kindergarten teacher. She remained in Walton County for seven years, teaching kindergarten in the first grade. In nineteen ninety nine, she accepted a position at Warren County Elementary Schools as a third grade teacher. And during her time there, she taught third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. When I think of this woman, I think about her guilt for connecting with students and for challenging them to go above and beyond and nutrition sets as honors. Even when faced with life's greatest challenges, she's still going one hundred percent. She's been a model of dedication for students. She says that what she's enjoyed most about her career is the fun that she can have with students while teaching and watching the world. And that every day is different and interesting. Our third teacher is Mr. Patrick Tice. Mr. Tice attended Columbia International University in Columbia, South Carolina, where he received an Associate of Arts in theology. Then he began to pastor Woodville Baptist Church in Green County for twenty years while working biopsiously as an industrial engineer. In nineteen ninety seven, he went back to school to the University of Georgia and received a teaching certificate. He came to the elementary school at that time, and he has served as a third grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, and the acting teacher. Mr. Tice models an enthusiasm for learning. He works hard to make connections with his students and he sets high expectations for learning. Mr. Tice says that he's been blessed to be where India's great opportunity to shape children's lives in Warren County. With their retirements, these three teachers are taking over eighty years of combined teaching experience. Warren County Elementary is truly one to miss these three educators. You know, they've been a vital member, have each been a vital member of the N C E S family. So I wish them the best in the year. And we'll move on to our Teacher of the Year. Okay, I'm happy to announce that here Spence has been named the two thousand twenty twenty one N C E S Teacher of the Year. Miss Spence graduated from the University of Georgia with a bachelor's degree in middle school education, majoring in language arts and minoring in social studies. Since then, she's also become certified in mathematics and science. She began her teaching career in Warren County teaching social studies and science at the Cuba Elementary. She moved to Warren County with her family in two thousand two and began teaching at Warren County Elementary School. While at N C E S, she taught fifth grade math, social studies and science, fourth grade math, social studies and science, and has also served as the P B L Connections Class Teacher. She calls this her dream position, not only because she has the opportunity to work with each student, but she also gets to work with every teacher in all sections. At the end of my first year at Warren County Elementary, I had a vision to create a P B L Connections Class. I shared that vision with Miss Spence, and she is products of it. She supports classroom instruction by leading our students in real world cross-curricular P B L projects. Students have plenty of pollinator gardens, raps, butterflies, birdhouses created, Google stop motion films, and so much more. In addition to our Connections Class, she serves as our P B L coach. She's currently participating in a three-year pilot for Georgia Elementary Act Ed. She's a grant writer. She serves on our H P P L C. And she served as a coach for our first ever science and English team. We didn't get to go and compete because of COVID nineteen, but she worked hard with the students. Hopefully we'll get to pick up her. When asked, her peers described Miss Spence in this way. She's a constant ray of sunshine for students and staff members alike. She knows and loves kids. She has a passion for making school relevant for students. She goes above and beyond to serve her students and colleagues with excellence. She's positive and encouraging. She models an interdisciplinary approach to teaching and learning. She makes herself available to collaborate and support all the disciplines in the school. She makes learning authentic and fun. Miss Spence is an outstanding educator and leader. She truly has desires to learn and innovate and foster the problem-based learning culture. And our Support Person of the Year. I'm pleased to announce that Mr. Renee Malcolm has been named the Warren County Elementary School two thousand twenty twenty one Support Person of the Year. Miss Malcolm is a graduate of Warren County High School, Angeles College. She's married to Damon Malcolm and has two children, Lea and Hannah. Before coming to our school in two thousand eighteen, she worked for defects for over nineteen years. She currently serves as our bookkeeper. She also helps out the front desk each day where she greets everyone and helps the students alike with her kind of. In her short time with us, Renee has made a big impression. She's described by our staff as joyful, positive, and reliable. She's a hard worker and does every task passed for this mom. We are blessed to have Miss Malcolm as part of the N C E S family, and I'm honored to present her as our Support Person of the Year. Thank you.
Hey.
Good evening.
All right. At the primary school, we have three teachers that are retiring this year. First, we have Miss Maddie Sappo, who's a kindergarten teacher at the primary school. She has total thirty seven years of experience with twenty six of those coming at Warren County Primary School. And then we also have Michelle Uwitt, who's an E I P teacher. She has twenty seven years of experience and twenty three years coming at the primary school. And then finally, we have Miss April Bone, that's the E I P teacher that has thirty years of experience with twenty nine years coming at the primary school. And each of the, the teachers were given a survey of about seven questions. And for those seven questions, some of the questions that they were asked is, what are some of the things that you love most about Warren County Primary School? And what was overwhelming that all three talked about the students? And that's very important when you start to look at educators because you want educators that are gonna focus on the students. So for them to say that that's what they love the most, it warmed my heart. Another question was, what are you gonna miss the most? And again, overwhelming with the students. They also talked about their colleagues, but they talked about how important it has been for them to help shape lives as young people and whatnot. And so that's something that they've been truly missed. And when you think about it, again, when you think about an educator, that is something that you want for them. I would also say that most of them have the right perspective because they were asked the question, what are your plans are after you finish? Or after you retire? And again, they talked about hobbies, but most of them said something about spending time with family and friends. And so again, I think that these, when you talk about educators, they're great educators, but they're even better. When I spoke with the faculty staff, I, everyone wanted to know, what did it mean to me? This looks different. These are the things that we've done in the past. And they didn't want those individuals to be shortchanged from their retirement. So that's very, you know, that speaks volumes about what their character is. Because when your colleagues come in and they want you to have the same just you as others, then, you know, that's, that's very important. I will say that there was a disclaimer. The last question on the survey said that I am not retiring because of the COVID nineteen. And it was multiple choice, but they only had one choice, which was no. And so they all said no for that. Our Teacher of the Year this year is Miss Bobby Hart. Miss Bobby Hart has fifteen years of education, nine coming at the primary school. And she's very well respected by her, her peers. In the nomination, they talked about hard work, energetic, sharing resources with younger teachers, and somewhat being a role model in the pre K department. She's a leader of pre K. Miss Susan Kennedy talks about Miss Bobby Hart and all of the things that she brings to the pre K program. She has a wealth of knowledge. And so that's very important when we are looking at your staff. So I think that when, I, I think about her being nominated and being chosen, I think that it's an excellent choice. All of the teachers were asked to write their philosophy. And I'm just gonna share a couple of things that she shared in her, with her philosophy. She said, talked about teaching students to have character. And that's very important when you start talking about not only educating individuals from a standpoint of the curriculum, but also teaching them those skills that they're gonna need to know moving forward. And when you talk about building character in early as pre K, it can only, you know, add to what we have in our school system as well as in the community. She talked about having, she wanted to inspire her kid to have a love for school and to become lifelong learners. And that's so important. One of the things that I've been able to achieve from high school to primary school is the love for learning that's always seen at the younger age. They come in, they're excited about school, and as you go through the years, you start to think about, but, you know, what happens with some of them by the time they get to high school sometimes. If they can choose to go somewhere else, they will, as opposed to come to the doors and get into hugs and whatnot. Miss Hart, I think, was probably one of the best choices that the teachers could have chosen. And it's just simply for the leadership that she has. She has a voice that's gonna be heard among her peers. I think, again, that she's very well respected, not only by the peers, but also by the administration. So again, Miss Kennedy speaks very highly of her in terms of what she brings and extends to us. She's an excellent choice. The Support Person of the Year is Miss Charlotte Mack. She is a paraprof. She works primarily with our E I P teachers, and she currently has twenty eight years of experience, going up, I think, close to twenty nine, with all years being at the primary school. Miss Mack is, when you talk about support, that's exactly what she provides. She was recognized earlier this year in a faculty meeting for always being willing to lend a helping hand. Whenever you need her to step in, she's right there to do those things for you. I can honestly say that I've never asked Miss Mack for any type of assistance, and she didn't say yes. So that's very important. When looking at the nominations, that was one of the things that her peers talked about. Her being willing to be able to help not only the students, but to help the teachers, well, as the administrator, with whatever it be. And so when you talk about having a supportive role, it's very important to be able to provide that support. And so as I think about Miss Mack, and I realize that she had close to twenty nine years, I gotta figure out how to make her stay a little bit longer if I'm not ready to move her because she is a great person. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have three staff members who are retiring this year from the middle school as well. Our first retiree that I would like to recognize is Miss Cynthia Jones. Miss Jones left the business world in nineteen ninety seven to pursue a career in education that was sparked by being an involved parent in the Warren County school system. She started her career at Warren County Elementary School and taught social studies, math, and science until two thousand and six, when she transferred to the middle school. She has taught sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math at the middle school. And when asked about the transition from the business world to education, Miss Jones states, I quickly realized that being a teacher involves more than content knowledge and teaching students. It required being a parent, guidance counselor, nurse, housekeeper, and wearing many other hats necessary for students to be successful. Miss Jones looks forward to spending more time with her family, including her elderly parents, her loving husband, and her energetic grandchildren. She hopes to be able to travel and see as much of the world as possible after surviving this whole day. Our next retiree is Miss Dorothy Newton. Married to an army officer, Miss Newton began her teaching career in two thousand eight in Germany, teaching in an Army Education Central post where she called Adult Education for Soldiers for College Prep. Army life then moved into Arizona where Miss Newton taught second grade, and then to Alabama where once again she called Adult Education. Her next stay was in San Antonio, Texas, teaching fourth grade at a Catholic school in a mostly Mexican parish. Upon her husband's return from Korea, they were stationed in Savannah where Miss Newton taught sixth grade in a Catholic school. After the end of her husband's deployment to Honduras, they moved to California where they started their family and then back to southeast in South Carolina. During these years, Miss Newton volunteered at various schools and enjoyed substitute teaching, knowing she would eventually resume teaching. When their family and kids settled into the Madison community, Miss Newton was offered what she calls her dream position, teaching sixth grade social studies at Warren County Middle School. Miss Newton sums it up best with the following statement. I could not have wished for a better group of fellow educators to work with than the staff at M C M S. With the support and resources of our school community, each day felt opportunities for me to confidently teach my passion, history, and geography in the World Studies curriculum of sixth and seventh grade social studies. And our last staff member that I would like to recognize, who is retiring, is Miss Virginia Coats. Miss Coats has been a paraprof at Warren County Middle School for twenty four years. And quite honestly, many of us are going to feel lost next year without her. She has worked in all three grade levels, but has spent the majority of the last ten years assisting with our eighth grade students with disabilities. One of her colleagues describes her best. Miss Coats is the definition of a team player. She wears many hats and never complains. Instead, she welcomes the opportunity with a smile and comes into each classroom with a mission to help students learn. She loves all students and won't stand to succeed. To do this, she sets up a structured environment and has clear expectations. Miss Coats works hard day in and day out, and she expects her students to do the same. Miss Coats also works for the Boys and Girls Club and plans to continue with her role and responsibilities with that influential program. Although she said she will miss the middle school, middle school students and staff, she is thankful for the opportunity to spend more time with her family. And our Teacher of the Year at the middle school this year is Miss Jody McMichael. Miss McMichael is a proud graduate of the Warren County Charter School System and has been teaching for twenty nine years, all twenty nine, and including her student teaching, has been at M C M S. She explains that Warren County Middle School is more than just a place to come to work, but she and her husband Trey, and both of their sons, Ryan and Ben, attended M C M S as students. It goes without saying that Miss McMichael is an integral part of the faculty. She currently serves as team leader and grade double leader, mentors our new math teachers each year, and sponsors our National Figure Honor Society. Miss McMichael is a staff member at our school who doesn't speak up often, but when she does, everyone listens. She comes to work every day with a smile on her face, and it is apparent to all who come in contact with her that she truly enjoys what she does each day. Her main concern is the teaching and learning that goes on in her classroom, and she makes it clear that her students are the top priority. The impact she has on students is evident even years after they leave her classroom and the middle school. She is able to bring out the best in every student she teaches because she makes it a priority to build personal relationships with them. When asked why she should be selected as Teacher of the Year, her colleagues stated, she is a phenomenal team leader, making our day to day M C M S an enjoyable one. Not only is she exceptional in her craft, but she also develops rapport with everyone she comes in contact with. Miss Jody McMichael is dedicated and knowledgeable and is well respected and reputed. She is always professional in her actions with students and staff. She is, most importantly, an exceptional teacher. She would be, she is an excellent representative for our Teacher of the Year. Miss McMichael is an integral part of M C M S. She does an excellent job of managing the National Figure Honor Society. And she is an excellent math teacher and works hard to ensure that the needs of all her students are met. She is well deserving of this honor. She is caring and knowledgeable and goes above and beyond with the students and staff. She is firm yet fair and will go out of her way to help students and staff that are in need. Miss McMichael goes above and beyond for her colleagues and her students every day. She opens her classroom doors well beyond the start of the day to assist both present and past students. I personally am grateful to work with her and am thankful that my own daughter benefited from being called Miss McMichael. She brings out the best in all of those around her. Also, my pleasure to be the actual Support Person of the Year tonight, and that is Miss Nicole Altrum. Miss Altrum is completing her twelfth year at M C M S. Prior to M C M S, she taught at the elementary level, worked with the upper ground bound program motivating high school students to pursue secondary education, and worked with the Georgia Tech Alumni Association as career advisor. M C M S is fortunate to have Miss Altrum as one of our school counselors. She is efficient, hardworking, flexible, and always positive. When asked by Miss Altrum's colleagues why she should be selected as Support Person of the Year, her colleagues stated, she is calm, dedicated employee who does so much for so many. She is the most optimistic, caring, genuine person I know. Nicole peers for our students and knows more than any of us would ever know, for she never seeks praise or attention. She is a very loving person, loves the students and staff, always very supportive and willing to help anyone. She always keeps a smile on her face, positive attitude, and is such a joy to be around. She is just an amazing person who goes above and beyond and helps others. She can always show you. She can always show you the bright side of any situation. She is a great listener and goes above and beyond in her role as counselor. She is an example of someone who is dedicated to their job and she affords all the responsibilities of her job well. She will always be a team player and she is not going to cause confusion. She is passionate and caring to all that she comes in contact with. If she is asked to do something, she's going to give one hundred percent and do it well. Over the years, she has networked four different counselors at MCMS, based on people retiring or maybe gone. She has remained a constant positive force in the counselor department. Everything she does is always done with a smile." And I think this last statement by one of her colleagues sums it up nicely. Nicole is the backbone of our school and our students, is one of our chefs, and we are lucky to have her.
That's uh Ms. Mason Adams, and I'll start with the school governance report. This is the middle script.
Hello. All right, so I just wanted to share some highlights with y'all from our school year this year. Um, there's a picture on the screen um from our visit, I think in December. But first of all, we start our year off with welcoming our new members, that includes myself. And I was, I'm a parent representative. I'm also the new chairman. Uh, Ms. Fortinay is our new teacher representative. Ms. O'Neil is another staff representative, and she's also our secretary. And then Amy Butler is another parent representative. And then we have two community members that were with us from the previous year, Chris Hodges and Fred Parent. And then another parent um was already there and her name is Lizzie, I'm not sure if I can explain. Tania, oh, so sorry. Do you have, do I go? Not sure. Okay, well, apologize for that. Trina, yes, thank you, thank you. Um, okay, so then the next thing we did was our SHT training with Mr. Coleman. And then we um talked about our school improvement plan and HPPLC process. We reviewed and discussed the initiatives, discussed monthly progress monitoring and impact checks. Uh, we looked at, are we doing what we said we're going to do? If not, why not? If so, is it, how is it working? If it isn't working, do we need to make course corrections? Um, the next image up on the screen is our REACH Scholarship Program. So this was a really exciting thing that happened this year. We had five REACH Scholars honored as they were inducted into the REACH Program. Uh, each scholar is paired with an academic coach and a mentor. And then upon graduation from high school, they will receive a ten thousand scholarship towards college. So this was really neat. They had signed it at high school. Uh, this is a very exciting thing for us this year. All right, on to the new school building. So um obviously we've had lots of tours. This image is from uh the Raising of the Final Beam where we all got to go and sign it, which was really neat and exciting. Uh, we talked about our capital campaign, what we need to finish up, selling bricks for the um courtyard area. We also talked about our moving in timeline, the traffic plan. And then lately we've had virtual tours shared with our students and parents during uh CDO schools during office system learning. That's been exciting. Uh, we've also reviewed the SHT bylaws for the system for our committee. Uh, we looked at the budget process and had input, updates on staff planning, the interview process, looked at the school calendar, the school climate. And we all, also that we um talked about the two WALM and C empowerment grants that the school received. We just, last week, did our drive-by teacher appreciation, which was really fun and exciting. I had to be out there for that. That was neat to witness. And during that, we announced our Teacher of the Year, um, Ms. Jody McMichael, and our Support Person of the Year, Nicole Altrum. And there's a great little image of them. And last but not least, uh, we have one member rolling off and we'll be following the nomination and election process every next week.
All right. Our internship and we do have, have had uh pretty outstanding finals that we have been nearing now at George's and will be in the meeting, uh, voting on and naming our internship recipients. We're now, we have business operations, Ms. Willis.
And just so y'all know, I've asked everyone to be uh voiced uh vocalizing for the screening. Uh, there's a little bit of audio gap when they're turning our way. So if it looks awkward, if they're looking for the screen, it's probably better. You know.
Okay. We're gonna start with the uh SLOSS revenue report. And for the month of April, we collected three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And uh that is going to be three point one nine percent the average percent change from last year at this time. So we're still trending pretty well. A little bit less than last year at this time, but still more than the previous month.
I think if we see a difference, it would be, this was actually the March collections. So the things April collection.
Okay, we'll go now to the uh comparison of the actuals to the budget report. And we've uh completed eighty-three percent of the year so far. And I went ahead and accrued our salaries and benefits payable for the, for the year. So that is already included in the expenditure section. But looking at the revenue section, uh, as you can see, we've collected eighty, eighty-one percent of the total for the year. So we're about two percent less and a million one hundred of that is the flip of money which has not yet come in. And on the expenditure side, as I said, the uh salaries and the benefits have been included, so you can see that's why we've gone ahead and our percentage has increased to almost where they need to be for the end of the year. Um, we still have two more months of payroll left for the May and the June to be accredited. And once we get our figures for the uh receivable part, offset the payables for the summer salaries, we'll go ahead and book those. Hopefully for the May, we maybe will have that be during their offset.
With this pandemic and the looming budget reductions that we're seeing, what I've asked this, uh, goal is to do is to go ahead and try to improve both the salary payables as well as the uh accrual of the uh revenues so that we can have the most clear picture of what the, where we'll be in comparison to what we budgeted and how that affects our general fund balance so we can make the best decisions on how to proceed following the budget reductions. We anticipate having most of those uh wrapped up in the month of May and then we can progress forward with the budget creation, assuming a little bit more from the state, um, you know, a percentage, but until they actually vote, it's hard to determine exactly what they.
Of course, good days is the TRS is being reduced, so that's gonna help us out a little bit next year. And it helped out with this.
And we calculated it was about four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, mhm, same as this year to next year. Um, and then the final report, the balance by funds report. For the month of April, the operating fund, we began with seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We had receipts of two million six and expenditures of two million three. And we had a transfer, net transfer between the general fund and the Georgia Fund One account of half million dollars. And then we earned interest in the Georgia Fund One account of fifty-six hundred dollars. So the ending balance in that account is currently seven point six million dollars. For the ELOS fund, we began the month with one hundred and six thousand dollars. We had total receipts of two million three. We had expenditures of three million two and had net transfers between the Georgia Fund One of one million eight. So the ending balance in the Bank of Madison for the ELOS fund was seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And if you'll notice, uh, the ending balance in the Georgia Fund One now for the East Loss account is eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The money that was transferred out went towards paying off our uh bond payments, which was principal and interest semi-annual payment that was being made first. So if you turn now to the expenditures.
We were, we were very blessed that uh the state was holding the ten percent uh of their, of their amount and we were able to work with them to release that. We were, with this pandemic going on, we were actually the only system they were explaining for so that we could make our bond payment.
So now that's completely set. It's a finishing deal.
And the majority of the bills that this school pays, so. Yes, there's a few, few lingering ones for next month. Not any large bills. I think we went ahead and paid all the bargains. There's, there's.
Fairish should be completed.
Fairish is completed. Uh, most of the technology is completed. I think there's one technology bill that they do a forty thousand dollar one that, which they don't have all the receipts on yet. We'll have another bond payment next month, correct? We've got an interest payment in November. Small. And then, then every, every May. Every May. I want to say we have six more to pay. Is there a six more? I can look that up.
It's eight years and ten years, so. This is our first one. And so the two payments that were made for the bonds were uh a million four, five, six for the twenty-seventeen bond, principal and interest, and for the twenty-eighteen, it was one million seven. So our total expenditures was three million two out of the ELOS account. And that concludes my report, so. Comments or questions?
I'd just like to reiterate that there was an award for Distinction of Excellence for Financial Reporting. Uh, I think that the school system certainly goes to all your hard work. And you've known, certainly the budget committee is very appreciative of that. I think that an award like that demonstrating to the public and the citizens of the county that we take seriously the expenditure of their. Six things, right? That's, yeah, very, very well done. One other question we need to, when we look at the um property tax or the tax money, we're at ninety-one percent um, collection. Is that trending, is that similar trend in May to the previous years? Maybe you could let us know next time.
Yeah, I think it is. And I, and I would head and check, and I think there was just like maybe two hundred thousand that was left to be collected from out of the one, but then we over-collected in the uh tag, tag money, so.
But what I'm asking is that top one, we're due fifteen, seven, and we collect fourteen, three, just if, maybe next month, just check and see where that is.
As far as that's at, one million one hundred, because that's in that category right there.
Gotcha.
So hopefully we will receive that in June or July.
Was that the timber money we were?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that one.
Right.
And there's other local revenue pieces of that. Thank you, but.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, actually, that's good support for your relationships. Very healthy.
Good evening, everybody. This will be pretty short. Uh, did want to share, normally we have the retirees come in, but I wanted to let you know the gift that they were gonna receive. It was gonna, it's gonna have a plaque on it, a plaque as well. Thanks, Matt, for their loyal or dedicated service to Morgan County Charter School System. So this will be delivered to them at some point in the near future. We're collaborating with the principal to kind of figure out the logistics on that. But we did want you to know the gift they were getting. And then the, our partners in education will also recognize our Support Employees of the Year and our Teachers of the Year was a gift as well, as they normally do. Uh, just to give you an update on the Teacher of the Year for the state level, they have actually suspended their program until December of two thousand twenty-one. So this year's Teachers of the Year, we're not gonna have Assistant Teacher of the Year. So there'll be individual school teachers of the year, and then next May, we'll, they'll nominate Teacher of the Year for each school, again, from each school. And then all eight of those teachers will be entered for the Assistant Teacher of the Year, which will later go on and go out to the state application. So because the state suspended their program, uh, we won't have Assistant Teacher of the Year for this one. Also, just to give you an update on our annual evaluations, so all of the annual evaluations have been suspended for this year. Principals can still provide feedback to teachers for growth, uh, but, but all the annual summative assessments are suspended for this school. And then just to give you an update on our school nutrition meal services, there's a chart there you can reference, and that's the meals that we provided. As you can see, from that first week, it's gone up each week. And then we did have a slight drop today of about forty-three students. Uh, fewer than last week, but, but still pretty consistent longer. And then next week, we will honor, we will provide to the school of students. All right, that concludes my reports. Okay, any questions? All right, thank you all.
All right, that's something that's teaching the learning, student, and public.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see different people in person. Um, I think that as we looked at our high school students and heard the principals talk about the Teacher of the Year and the Support Personnel, it just is clearly evident that our strength is our people, both in our young people and our professionals that are here each and every day. So it was great to see the recognition of all of those tonight. Uh, I wanted to give you a little update about our distance and remote learning. It is the last week of instruction. I think there are a lot of hallelujahs going on around the county for that one. But I, I do want you to think for a moment, this has been an unprecedented um situation. And we have had both children, parents, teachers, support staff go above and beyond. And we have really sought to try to find that just right balance between standards mastery, student engagement, and that social emotional well-being. And that is a tough, tough spot to find when we are trying to move forward with learning, but also recognize that this is just something really different and very stressful to open up out there. Um, our people have gone above and beyond with, they have done Zoom meetings with students. They have done Google Hangouts with students. Our teachers have called students. Some teachers have went and made door-to-door no-contact visits just to make eye contact with students. We've utilized snail mail, um, USB drives with video instructions and instructional packets. So we've really gone again and tried to provide an equitable, next best thing to allow in-person to um instruction. Um, thanks to Facebook's new data center, um, we've been able to offset some of the extra copying costs, offset some of the school nutrition costs, and we've equipped ten buses with mobile Wi-Fi called Kajits. It's a funny little um word, but it does enable us to provide drive-in Wi-Fi service and um through a filter device. So the kids just can't get on just anything. It does utilize some filters so that they are safe when they are going on the internet. So we have those buses parked. There's a schedule online, um, four hours a day at ten different locations around the county. That started today. It was a little late, later than what we'd anticipated simply because the shipping was delayed. We hadn't ordered and we couldn't get there faster. So um, if you get feedback, let us know. Um, that's something we hope to continue when it's next year. So we're keeping those Wi-Fi alive on the buses.
Can I just mention, I figured that Facebook had sixty-four thousand dollars of collaborative uh costs for the copying, the drives, the meals, connected.
Yes.
That's amazing. That's bothering our community.
It is. And they've been great to work with, and they will offer quarterly um grants for schools. So we're already getting another package together for when they have any money open up in September. Um, let's see, a couple more things. Promotion retention. If you notice in the action items, we are asking you to waive our um policy IHD, which is the promotion retention policy, to allow. which is the promotion retention policy, to allow administrators to work individually, um, for each student. And whether the parent thinks that it would be a better idea to retain or if the school has a great deal of concern and think it would be optimal for the child to be retained, retention will be minimal if you will agree to waive that promotion retention policy. That is per Georgia Department of Education guidance. Um, and to piggyback on that is we have gone back and forth through what would be the best way to grade students while we're trying to balance that, um, engagement piece with the standards covering piece and the fact that we've got a lot of stress going on in our community. So we are, um, going to be utilizing a positive grading practice where zeros for missing assignments will be dropped and no grade will be, um, counted that would, would not increase the student's average past that March six thirteenth date. So we will be looking at, we gave ample opportunities for kids to make up missing work, multiple modalities for submission. And so only grades that would improve the average will be counted. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Let me get you know, we've provided an excuse here with these kids, because some of them just want to be given those behind, even though they work hard. What are we looking at for any kids who are?
We have already looked, started planning for that. Um, primary, elementary, and middle school already have times built into their day for remediation or, um, or extension opportunities. We'll be utilizing the MTSS and RTI to making sure that we have, um, students with that. And actually, we're working on some grant applications. Each school submitted a grant to get some additional funding for that. We'll continue to utilize after-school tutoring at the elementary and primary and, like I said, we have built in times during the day. So we've already worked on different master schedules for that purpose. Yes, ma'am? Anything else? Thank y'all.
Thank you. I almost picked up since, uh, I'm supposed to get over there. But, uh, first thing on superintendent's report is, uh, a change in plans for end-of-year celebration. We will continue the end-of-year celebration, but we will do it a little differently than normal. Uh, the plan is that, uh, Bob Hughes has worked out with, uh, Farm Hughes, uh, for the teachers to go by, that go by on Tuesday to pick up their plates, the teachers and staff. Uh, there will not be a formal assembly of people. And then with the, uh, leftover funds from, uh, the mills, we will be drawing electronically for prizes, just like the group there. Uh, we did send out a letter last week to all, all of our potential sponsors and sponsors. Say that, that if you're a small business and you're struggling, we absolutely understand you may not be in a position to help out this year as much or even, uh, uh, as you did last year or even at all. And we understand that and we'll just deal with what we have. Uh, we did have a little bit of money in the pie account that we gave from last year. We anticipate it being very similar as, as far as prizes and mill. Uh, I will also invite some folks and provide some virtual readings, um, our state representative, state senator, and our state, uh, board of education member. And that will be cast out to the teachers, but it will just be at their, their convenience now that they've got. We believe it's more important this year to, to recognize our employees that have gone a little extra, uh, a little different than they anticipated. And, uh, that's, we will continue with that celebration. And the next thing is, uh, just an update on the high school graduation plan. I really appreciate the opportunity. I had to miss with, uh, several of you regarding, uh, graduation plan that, uh, Dr. Edwards and I had been working on. Our staff so built and they've worked on, they think about how much we drag on Brian Cook in, in the normal situations. Uh, Mr. Cook and, uh, the Spindley, uh, we're just absolutely outstanding in helping put together a plan that you could, could go ahead and add graduation. We can make it very special and, uh, you know, just, just take care of it. I appreciate your support for that as well. It's really easy to communicate to the public our plans when we know that our board members support the rationale of the why. It's, why don't we get to it? But I'll be able to just recap, uh, and then we'll make sure every board member understands what time they're supposed to be there.
Um, yes, thank you very much for the support that we had. The, the two business priorities, as we've shared before, the seniors wanted to walk across the stage and they wanted to have people there to celebrate. Um, and our beautiful campus just has the perfect layout for it. So, uh, we were able to develop that plan. So where we are right now, um, is that we are beginning the process of seniors picking up all their regalia. We're back today. We'll have a drive-in graduation practice next Monday so that students will receive, that's when they will receive all of their, um, placards that can go in front of the, the car dashes. Um, and again, the plan is still that students will arrive at a set time into the main street parking lot. Their four vehicles, if they choose to bring four, will be directed into certain lanes. And then they will be, um, able to circle, drop their senior off. A new development that we have that's a very, is very much positive is that we had talked about putting together a memory lane together at Main Street. And we've had several of our teachers who have seniors embrace this. And so we're fully planning on almost a museum, uh, that students will travel up on that main street before they walk out for graduation. Um, at that graduation practice, like I mentioned already, they'll receive those signs. We'll give them, uh, additional instructions. And, um, we have, we have practiced, we have driven the cars, we have used stopwatches. So we think that we'll be able to, to make this work very smoothly. Um, and then, of course, each board member had signed up for a specific shift of work and, and we greatly appreciate that. Um.
So I think that if I recall the shifts right now, uh, Mr. Land, you'll be on the first shift on Wednesday. Mr. Ainsley, you'll be the second shift on Wednesday. Nelson, you, Mr. Haley, you'll be the first shift on Thursday. Uh, Pat, you'll be the second shift on Thursday. And, uh, Mr. Howard, you'll bring up the last stage.
Wouldn't have it any other way.
Thank y'all for, yeah, that, that worked out beautifully. We, we did give Dr. Page the first, uh, opportunity to refuse the time that his, his daughter would be graduating. So he, he decided he'd take that shift.
So we're, we're excited about what's coming. Students are, are getting more and more excited and, um, just appreciate the willingness for a lot of people to do a lot of things. And we've had more people call or message, um, voluntarily, helping out, helping out. And so we appreciate what you've been doing to rally around this as well.
Great. And I don't know how to work this part one of the line of Dr. Page at our school colors, uh, for that, my, my.
It's random, Mike. It's random.
Brad. Thank you for all the work. I think that's a lot, but you'll, uh, you know, figure out, and I appreciate how y'all, uh, made it his first part.
We're, we're excited for it. Appreciate the support and the effort. Thank you.
Next presentation we have, uh, Mr. Monica Callahan, our city planner and downtown development executive director. She's going to come in and present a proposal to us regarding the city trail system. I have the handouts here and, uh, she's going to give us an idea of what that trail system could look like and maybe ask us for a hint nod as to whether we think it's a feasible idea. She's got some, uh, potential summer plans that could make people, make something happen in the summer. And with that, we, uh, we need to come back at the next board meeting and potentially approve an easement, uh, that she'll talk about as well. So I'll distribute these matters, Valerie.
Well, it sounds like I don't need to do a presentation. The change has already covered everything. Uh, so, um, one, it's nice to be with y'all this evening. I hope that your families are healthy and whole and happy today. Um, it's my pleasure to represent the Madison Green Space Commission. Um, they've been working on trying to do, uh, a devise a model mile for several years. And, um, in a time where recreation and outside enjoyment becomes more and more important, um, they're excited that this opportunity has come along and they are able to share that with y'all. Um, so we, first off, I want to say that we understand what companies are asking. Uh, and so, uh, this is all just a proposal and an idea and we hope that it's something that you will see there to enhance by all. So, um, I wanted to thank, uh, Carl Scott for preparing our presentation today. He's on the trails committee. And, um, uh, Candace Carlson cannot be in today's slide doing the presentation. I hope I be a adequate substitute for that. Um, so the area that we're talking about, um, we've been referring to as Horse Branch Trail East for a little bit. Um, so what we want to try to do is, um, we're, we're looking to do a long divisioned trail, city by trail system. But we have to start somewhere. And we want something that is big and flashy and, um, invested enough to be something that multiple users can use. And so right now is a very specific moment in time. And I want to tell y'all why I think that's really important, that it's right now, because we have the opportunity to look at a trail system component where there's only two or three properties in one. And that's a really big deal. If you have to acquire a few bits and little bits and little bits, it's part of a shared trail together. So right now is a very unique moment in time where a building can be a primary partner. And we think that's an opportunity that, um, will bring certain benefits to our community. One is more and more, we're trying to focus on alternative recreation, alternative transportation connectivity to our neighborhoods and inside the city center. Now, we're not a highly against population, but we do want people to be outside, be able to enjoy some of our natural areas. We're looking for a model mile that provides recreational opportunities to multiple users, not just that avid jogger. Um, not just the, the, the family that has the child with the bicycle, we're thinking walkers. And I'm not talking walking, I'm talking walkers and we're talking strugglers. We want the whole family to be able to participate on some form of model miles. Um, we'd like to be able to have offshoot paths that are available to, particularly that I think y'all would find advantageous in terms of recreation and in terms of environmental awareness. Um, perhaps making people more aware of the forestry, uh, the job positions that are out there for the recreational, um, uh, components that we have here in the school system. Now I'll talk about cross-country a little bit in just a moment. But we see this as a recreational and environmental opportunity. And we think that that's where your partnership is most vital, is to bring those opportunities to both your, um, our residents and to your students and faculty. Um, we think that there is a good component of green space preservation in our trail system. That's not necessarily the lost component, but there's a little piece I'm going to talk about. Um, and we think that green spaces that provide recreational opportunities are pretty much of those, a higher density, um, residential awareness. So today, I am happy to share with you the idea of a proposed eight thousand, um, linear speed model mile. And so a lot of Georgia communities have already started moving to a trail system. And we've been talking about it for a while, but we're actually a little bit behind the curve compared to people that have connected other school systems, um, with, uh, their industrial areas and created these transportation opportunities. So we really want to look at a multi-modal, uh, main line that would be a showcase piece, a starting piece to a bigger trail system. Um, it would have several soft paths to the side, and we're going to go to the map in just a moment. Um, and a signature bridge to get us across, uh, uh, a stream. And maybe that's something to be a partner on, since I understand y'all have intentions to use a thirty acre area, then get across the stream. So maybe there's a, an opportunity for the city and the O E partnership and they use some cross-sig in there. Um, and then we believe that there are several, uh, features and amenities throughout this very specific access area that would offer, um, very unique opportunities. So if you will put up the map after a little bit. Okay, and I, I talk fast, so y'all slow me down if I did, if I get going too fast. So the model mile is represented on this map in red. Um, you'll notice that it has two, uh, starting and an end point. The starting point right now is, uh, indicated on Washington Street and that is on the, oh, Bethany, depending on whether your city or county. Um, I think the, your station line runs right down the middle of the road. Um, so if you're standing, uh, or you're looking at the bottom left of the map, you'll see that there's a small red box and that is, uh, envisioned as the Petri Harbor. And it would have a five or six parking spaces in a parking corral that kept people from driving down into space. And then that model mile traverses about point seven five, uh, linear, uh, miles to the point where it hits the O E property. And that is where it touches the yellow line. And then there's another point seven five where it would continue if, um, y'all, if you remember, onto, uh, East Avenue, um, with, uh, being right side of my pants. And whereas it's disconnected a little bit on the screen, you should be able to see that right. Um, so there are a couple of other opportunities that we see. Um, there's an orange line that you see that circles, um, if you were to flip the page, you will see that it makes sure that it acknowledges your intentions for a new school building at some point. Um, and we see that as a point seven five loop, a soft trail that can be used for, um, cross-country and has an opportunity to rotate around. Um, uh, there's also a green, would you go back one first to him? Thank you. Um, or if there's someone else that's manipulating the map. Okay, great. Uh, I know it's not always the, the big man in charge. So the green trail, if you'll notice, goes really close to a lot of the water resources. So that goes down, it dips down into the flood plain. It dips down into the, um, wetland area and approaches the state water boundary. Those are all ecological opportunities for biology classes, for environmental instruction. Um, that is also a soft path. Everything that you see this labeled as path is not a hard concrete multi-modal. It's probably bark or, uh, uh, compacted gravel so that there's an all system way to approach, uh, these very sensitive water resources. Um, and then in yellow, down at the bottom right, that is Willeridge. So Willeridge is a senior community that is under construction now. Um, and they are building their own trail system in the yellow and they're, they're going to connect up to, it's a, your seniors can go and take advantage of, um, the natural resources that we have. So if you were starting that school system and you were a cross-country person, you could do a mile and a half out, mile and a half back, that gives you a three-mile trail system that you could jog. And we see that as an opportunity for the school system to, um, connect your, their young people with a, a different, um, way to jog instead of on the track or on the seaside walker street. Um, so the next slide shows you all the different assets that are in the area. Um, and I've already kind of highlighted where the soft surface courses are. I'm going to show you some of the pictures that, that kind of identify the opportunities for me. So on the first picture slide, it's the next one, please. Thank you. So what we're talking about, and in terms of a model mile, uh, the ones that we've researched throughout the country, the one on the bottom left is what we're really talking about. That's called side-by-side. So normally what you ask for is a fifty-foot construction piece. And then post-construction, it shrinks to a thirty-five-foot piece that contains a hard surface. Usually that's either concrete or asphalt. Uh, and then you usually have a soft surface path that's decided. It can be, I'm looking at interesting, um, recycled tire, um, components, um, and also a gravel component. Joggers and cross-country typically do not drive on asphalt or concrete. Asphalt, they have to. Concrete is that, it's bad for knees. Um, so, uh, but you need a hard surface path if you want a service. Uh, we have a group that's interested in, uh, making the call persons trail, which is where blind people can navigate a trail and, um, get out of the nature. Um, and strugglers and, uh, walkers have to have hard surface training. So you're looking at a hard surface, um, trail, usually six to ten feet in width. Maybe one day we'll have off-part ordinance, maybe it accommodates that at some point, but that's not what we're getting right now. And then you have a gravel or a, uh, low road path in the right that accommodates, um, more active users that are using their needs a little bit more than I can be spot now. Um, we're looking at a prefabricated bridge, um, so something like the one you see in the bottom line. That's the opportunity I talked about, maybe finding, uh, and, and I try to locate grant money as much as I can. Tonight I got to announce to the council, we found three hundred thousand dollars for housing and received that. So I'd love to be able to come back to y'all and say, hey, I found money for a bridge and we can help you get where you want to be. Um, the entrance arbor is like the one you've seen in downtown at Rainbow Springs. Um, they kind of say, here's where you can enter the trail. Um, and it usually is low key, two benches, trash can. And, uh, we're talking about a little bit of a accessory parking because we don't want to do, we don't want people using the primary school parking by itself. We want to say, here's, here's a little bit of parking that'll be gravel, low intensity. Um, would be open, you see in the far left corner, you see our, our roller blade person, roller blade up there. And then the footland or the footpaths are on the next slide. And one of the things I really love about the bottom left is that environmental access. Um, making, um, uh, the environment accessible to young people that are looking at, um, uh, environmental management, um, professional positions. Uh, I think that it's really hard for the average person to envision getting around in nature. I'm from a farm, I'm used to that, but not everybody grows up in that environment and being able to allow the accessibility, um, to those kind of areas. Um, of course, we highly envision this as a place where we can do everything from bird watching to bicycle. Okay, um, so I want to talk about some of the things that we consider and I hope that, um, while you're considering. while you're considering a potential basement, um, that you would think about these things as well because I have this responsible leadership. I know that y'all are doing that. Um, one is always, we get asked about liability, uh, safety. So I'm gonna touch a little bit on that so that I can answer any questions in advance about possible care. Um, so we're looking at a decent. Um, and post-construction, the model line would be where we find the basement. If the city is receiving the basement, and that's the agency I'm working for, um, then the liability for use of that property for access basement is the city's. Um, so I wanna also talk a little bit about safety. So passive parks. Um, we maintain all the passive parks inside the city. Um, we have not had a problem with using our passive parks. Um, the trust system would be just like those. It would close at dark. There would not be any lights. Lights, people make lights make safety. They don't. They encourage use of it after dark. So you don't want lights. Um, there would be personal uh personal responsibility questions. Just like when you travel our interstate corridor in our back uh roads, I call mom when I'm leaving the house, I call mom when I get home. Uh, doing a trail as a buddy, carrying your cellphone, those are the kind of personal responsibility that you encourage as you go. Um, one of the things I also did at the meeting was I specifically queried on our police office system and said, what is, you know, what's the primary problem we're having with passive parks? Me, just a couple of words. You know, I said, guys, we don't have a problem with passive parks. Good here. Okay, that's 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 what I wanna do here. And I said, if you had to say of any problems that we've had in our passive parks, can you think of because I asked for a regular recurring problem we had. I said, there's no regular recurring. And I said, if you wanted to, that you'd say, we don't want anyone to have any again, what would that be? And he said, well, when we had event use of one of our parks where it's not intended as a camp, we had, should we spot them? But other than that, um, no passive park concerns out of the police department? And I asked if there was any concern about a future trail in I'm at, no concern from the the police department. Then we'd be the ones who would be called upon um to enforce uh any concerns that we saw. Um, so what I wanna also just mention is I I do think that the trail, and I'll end with this, I think the the trail has an opportunity for our residents. I mean, honestly, Madison's a great place to go. We all know it. We're all proud of it. Everybody tells us it's a great place to live. We set work in here all the time. But uh when we're outside our community, it's also great to be there. We are behind on trust system side. And other communities, we wanna remain competitive within our schools. Some is now so competitive with everybody's school system, our trust system is just as nice. Um, and not only does it benefit our residents, it can benefit your stewards right now, your children, your your faculty. Um, it can be an opportunity for um both of the cross-country team as well as to reduce it for their use. And then lastly, I believe this has an economic value, I think. Um, we have lots of tours that come to see um and do, and I think that this is a good add. It's very compatible with the type of economic activity we've had in the past. And hopefully in months to come, we'll see ourselves reemerge from the climate we're in. And hopefully that'll be an opportunity to uh add something else to our show that's included in our community. But first and foremost, most everything the city crime department works on, residents first. So um, I will say thank you for your time. I will take any questions that you have. I already see that finger up there.
And we'll have to say this, I'm I'm all about the the trails who I think is involved in this break. I know we had a presentation about a year ago, maybe. We came to us and we talked before, we were treating a little thing, we talked about it.
And just initially as an idea.
Oh, yeah. And I I still, I mean, you know, you just had to get on some late for me, but I built this thing, same piece. Now, I will say in all respect, my vote is just that city, a trail is not a park. It comes with its own inherent
Yes.
problems because of the seclusion that's afforded on the trail. So when somebody gets out of a park, get in a secluded area, those are the issues you have to worry about. But what I do like from the visual pieces you showed them the night of a couple of days, it it is the professionalism that looks, it's just not, I mean, no soft park, I mean, a soft trail would be a little different. But certainly looking at the uh, you know, the pavement and the gravel that might go with it, and that seems to be very open, very uh visible on distances and that much stuff. So I still would probably encourage as you move forward with this that that's at least taking into consideration that that a trail is a secluded piece. You know, I see you guys still with Contra Trail. Talk to them about the seclusion of Crown Bay. That that's different than what, you know, apologies.
We we've talked to um Matt Partners as well as the Land Partners. Um, so we're we're aware that the the security issues are different. Um, we're trying to get a handle on how um uh we might address that differently. Right now, we're anticipating addressing it differently. But there there is an opportunity for a more tailored approach to that, just on the passive parts. One of the things I did, we um kind of hammer, that I I really want to talk about is the opportunity right now. Um, Mr. Kelly Mahoney, I don't know how many of you are aware of him, he's building Lowbridge. And it's immediately adjacent to the site. So one of the things um Dr. Luther queried me on because he tried to tie me down. When are you gonna be started? When when's something gonna happen? You know, and so um Kelly Mahoney is currently under construction with Lowbridge. Um, he is gifting twenty-five acres that is immediately adjacent to the O E's property that has all the stream in it. So if you're looking at the white acreage on far left, that is a gift that should be being made this month. We approved the plan this morning. Um, also in tandem with that, he's giving the city an basement on the other ten to fifteen acres. That is the right half of the white wall. So this is a moment in time. Um, I pitched, because I'm not scared to ask, um, I pitched to comrades the opportunity against eighteen acres section three that goes the other direction. We can be looking at an opportunity between all the eastments that are currently in the area, piecing together fifty acres of green space for our community. And that is, this is a massive opportunity uh in terms of the moment in time. Here's why it might be viable more this summer. Mr. um Mahoney has also promised two miles of grading. We'll clear the trees and grade the trail. I put a first two miles. We don't have improvement money, but the trail will be immediately usable for walkers and runners. Um, and we will be seeking grant money for the actual improvements to the trail. Um, so he can be grading two miles. We've asked for some extra grading in the area. Haven't gotten answered on that yet. But some um potential that might help y'all with some things that you're looking for as well. And then um the, so the amalgamation of green space and the um the use of uh free uh remedial services for uh grading could make the trail use and visibility a lot higher, um, a lot to maybe achieve, if that's something y'all could entertain. I'm sorry, I think that's wrong.
And if you do look for that grant money, I was gonna say, um, emergencies zones or some type of system that's uh with, you know, could be a blue light. You see that on campuses, on their trails. And I think in some of those cases, there are grant money. Thank you for that.
There's an open trust community. Okay, I I actually think that's a great idea. Um, we're looking at fine for a hundred thousand to be in our for construction. But we have a little bit, um, you gotta make sure it's a reality first. So we have a little bit uh bonus pieces like that. That'd be very good.
Most of them are, you know, so, I mean, most of them are subtle. I don't know about how it was, there's power issue. Just a matter of checking on periodically.
Thank you. I'll relate that to the green space board. That sounds like something to be interested in.
The interest entrance that is on our side, we could go ahead and have a curb cut and have a parking lot there during construction.
Yes. Um, and one of the things that we found with Washington, our Gilbert Park, is that it's important, even if we're having just a gravel informal parking area, it's important to have portions around it so it carouses people, um, so that people won't drive across it from this park. So we're, we're not committed to having a gravel parking lot on East Avenue, but we would recommend having at least a little residual park. So that'd encourage people to, that they can bear themselves of their parking lots. Um, but we're looking at an entrance harbor and five to six parking spaces.
A lot of the answer.
Yes.
Yeah, one more, one more thing. It's, you know, as time goes on, you know, this project hopefully kind of comes to fruition. You know, looking at maintenance issues, you know, I think it's one thing to put asphalt down, you know, there, but you've got to maintain that also. And what's the city looking at as far as addressing maintenance and, you know, over the years?
So the ideal for us is asphalt. The ideal for us is concrete.
For the good.
And it's more expensive. Um, but I, you know, I was bridge manager this morning that I was coming through. Um, we have had really good success with Rainbow Springs, um, and just managing that area within two foot, three foot of a six-foot concrete wall. And it's been there fifteen years now, haven't had any problems with the trail itself. The PATH Foundation recommends concrete. Um, so we're looking at a a a permanent paving feature. Like had a more uh uh asphalt has to be packed regularly. One of the things that keeps it viable is truck weight and car weight sharping across it. So we we recognize that it's vulnerable if we use a asphalt system. So um, that's one of the kind of availability of grant funds. We've also reached a couple of trails to have some portion of the asphalt and the rest of it's concrete. And as they can pay for it, they replace these two concrete. So our management should really be within the basement. And so um, if anything outside of basement, we would retrace that as our management.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for your time.
And uh, thank you, George Flakes. You got it, girl.
I I'm gonna stay and answer his questions, but the D V A's attorney showed up, so I I don't feel anything, but I'll be here to listen. Thank you for your time.
Our next item on the list, and if you have any questions about the trail system or anything, you would like for me to clarify with Ms. Callahan, please uh have a note. We've also been working with Ms. Callahan and the Downtown Development Authority uh regarding a uh the development or redevelopment of the uh current, the 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 old middle school. And uh, I think uh Mr. Lee Avenue and uh has been with me. He's coming in tonight to propose a M O U or I G A.
I G A.
I G A. For us to consider in partnering with the city and the Downtown Development Authority to uh to redevelop the middle school property. Right. Thank y'all for coming on.
Thank you so much for having us. I wanna thank you uh for the confidence that the D V A will want us as a partner. Uh, it's a compliment and I also want to express that the D V A very much patterns itself as a long-term facilitator for improving the local tax base. We're funded by the city and the economic developmental, but we welcome our partners in community development. Uh, tonight before you, you have an I G A agreement with the city. The city has already acted to approve, enabling the D V A to stand before you tonight. Uh, of course, Ed is not here, but this is that city council meeting tonight. That's the reason I'm here. So on to the I G A agreement. The I G A before you is between two government bodies, the Board of Education and the City of Madison. There's a mirror agreement between the City of Madison and the D V A, which acting as the city's urban renewal agency. This is signed for the responsibility for the city's obligation in the form of. This is a five-year agreement for the former middle school campus. First, the agreement acknowledges the board's three primary objectives. Honoring the legacy by preserving of the name Pearl Burning, retaining the Boys and Girls Club, and avoidance of shutting down the whole facility. Second, since the site is located in the urban renewal development area, the D V A agrees to prepare a study of the property and within two years will complete its evaluation on the redevelopment feasibility and formally request actions on future transfers of property. Third, in the interim, the D V A agrees to uh shepherd two immediate senior opportunities for the Pearl Street frontage buildings. That's the Boys and Girls Club is interested in staying in the city, has agreed to apply for a C D D, C D D grant uh for a full renovation of what they wanna use. And then the Georgia Military College is interested in opening up an annex. And the city has agreed immediate lease of the property through the D V A to keep the facility open. Uh, objective one was GMC has agreed to the portion of the site will be occupied, will be referred to as a Pearl Burning Campus, and D V A will ensure proper signage as such. Objective two is the Boys and Girls Club are interested in staying in in buildings will be evaluated for site contingency. And that's conducive and not objectionable to the primary tenants. GMC's decision-making will take into account code and fire compliances until the separations, private and access conflicts, and ultimately risk management issues of tenants. The agreement requires both Board of Education property and the property. Agreement requires the Board of Education provide the property in good operating conditions and provide monthly funds to defray the cost of operation, maintenance, utilities for the subject property, not captured by the proposed tenants. Thus, utilities will be in the D V A's name until further if they're uh put in place. The agreement requires D V A to lease to GMC and offset these costs as much as possible by securing immediate tenancy. Thus, objection three is no, no shutting down the site. At least fifty percent of the grounds become immediately occupied. D V A will continue to work to redevelop the the tenancies and all the remainder of the property and redevelopment studies that will include the full evaluation of remediation and or demolition that might be necessary to return the site to uh ability. The agreement also includes a provision that the Board of Education will make funds available for the remediation of the property. And I've got Lee here who drew up the uh agreement if y'all have any questions.
So in a nutshell, we're entering a five-year lease agreement. First two years will be a viability study for the redevelopment of that property. In the short term, we've already secured two uh tenants, the Georgia Military College. And then the conversations with uh D V A with Ed Laitman, we agreed to renovate the portion of the building that GMC utilized to offer them the opportunity to immediately begin operation in August, fall semester. And then all the utilities be turned over to the D V A. But we would, we would pay the cost of utilities for the portion that's not being used by a tenant until, uh, unless a tenant is identified. And at that time, there'll be a a a renegotiation of how much of that. I think Ms. Callahan there has also mentioned that if a rent-paying tenant is uh identified, if a rent tenant uh is identified, then some of those proceeds would come back as a credit against those utilities. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So uh, the only utilities that the O E's really paying for are the ones that are not paid for by the tenant, just to keep the buildings from rotting and moving. So it's just that minimal. But if we were to secure, say, a tenant for the band wing immediately, um, we would be passing on those proceeds to y'all. The goal here is not to be able to pay in any shape or form, and any surplus would be uh transmitted back to the the unearned property.
The only long-term unknown is the cost of mitigating uh some issues we may have in the building and the and the uh long-term idea of a transfer to D V A, correct?
Yes, sir. And as of today, that restructuring era that now, um, we're we're getting cost closed, we're getting nationalized.
So what we're asking the board to do tonight is to approve this I G A that the uh city has already approved. That would allow us to move forward with the I G A, having GMC and the Boys and Girls Club be able to utilize, so.
This is a precaution here. I mean, I'm all in favor of this, of course, but we're talking about sign and we don't know certain costs yet. Would it be better if y'all were close to wait till we got some of that, make a suggestion? We got a, we basically have feasibility period that's set in there. It's it's kind of a discovery period for all of us with Board of Education and Department of Downtown Development. To look at the feasibility of future development, we'll take a while. And that's gonna be part of that equation. We've already gotten some remediation studies back, of course, that we're working at where aspects of this are already present and what remediation costs are. As we continue to go down that road over the next twenty-four months, we're gonna get a much clearer picture of all of this. So we can come back, hopefully it's not gonna take that long, but come back in a future day to discuss basically all those costs, the benefits for the board, the benefits for the city and the D V A. And basically have a plan to work together with the board. So we're certainly not trying to lock the Board of Education into any costs today that it wouldn't otherwise have for remediation. If this is gonna be uh restructured for any future use, it's gonna require the same remediation. Whether we're shivering that through or the Board of Education.
That was well said.
Yes, we're, we're in charge of the renovation for G M C, just for the portion allocated to GMC. And do we know what that process?
Uh, we're in the process of getting um getting quotes on that. The, just on the, on the front side of it, what it includes is a fresh uh paint job in the rooms that they'll be using. They'll primarily be using the front office area, those three classrooms, and then four classrooms down the uh eighth grade hall. And we'll be renovating the restroom.
So we're not, we're not hungry to venture with that. It's basically freshening up with the doctor's opinion.
Putting, putting new carpet in areas that have carpet and putting carpet over some areas that has tile, uh, pre-faining, uh, doing a little bit of electrical, you know, painting the restrooms.
Yeah, the capital budget. That's true.
And then as far as all maintenance exterior, I mean, we indefinitely manage that grass cutting, bushes.
Yes.
Uh, brick roofing. Which honestly, right now, we're, 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 we're gonna hit anybody, gonna have to, um, kinda like what maybe it's part of.
kind of like what maybe it's part of, we, remediation, we're gonna have to do anyway. By now, we're after the, uh, maintenance on it, uh, maintaining, you know, the outside until such time we can resell it or something. So I, I think this is all great, Rocky, it's just, no one knows the date, I mean, how long we, how much we're going to have to pay. And we haven't seen the contract till now, that we're past the sign of night. So it's, it's, it is fluid situation with, with the numbers, and I understand that. I'd say though it is, okay, we're going to be paying, we're going to be paying anyway. Um, we gotta keep it, uh, uh, prepared and, uh, so it's, it's really working with him and the DDA. Get us to where we, uh, ultimately we developed it.
In which we all want.
In which we all want.
We all want.
And just, and the hope is, if, if we're taking this into consideration, so we're going to bring the Board of Education plan that is going to be advantageous for all of us. So we're not trying to push off huge expense on the Board of Education to get benefit on the back end. The DDA is not looking to benefit. The DDA is basically looking to be a vehicle to help offset those costs.
The benefit of doing this now is to go ahead and get in, in writing an opportunity for Georgia Military College and Georgia Girls Club, which needs to have rosters and take ownership so that there is not further mitigation of situations going on if we were to close the building.
I think the opportunity kind of created urgency. We, we had a really good opportunity, and so we kind of had to act fast, just want to jump on that opportunity because it's, it's a perfect fit for that space.
And those, it, it appears fast to not, this has been going on for a couple of years now. But we, we, we had a focus group to go around and look at some other facilities across the state to, to bring to the DDA about a year ago, uh, a concept and, uh, protecting those three things that we wrote into that IGA that was done a couple of years ago.
Maybe we started August of eighteen. It's a basic framework of where we wanted to go, get to where we are tonight.
What we probably didn't see is, we probably didn't see the opportunity for Georgia Military College to come this quick. Uh, but in a visit that, uh, Mr. Latham, myself, and Ms. Callahan made during Thanksgiving break down to Georgia Military College, uh, Mr. Latham put it on the table that he would really like to have Georgia Military College come into the building as soon as it was vacated. And, and that this, this agreement tonight allows us the opportunity to start that type of partnership. And other partnerships of, of, of folks that have already taken a look at some other pieces of the building.
I just want people to like and brag on hand and do a wrong on them. Uh, one is I think that, um, in terms of urgency, um, Ed did see that opportunity, Dr. Woodard saw it too. And then catalyzing the building as quickly as possible, man objective to not close the facility on that. And I love that not only does it have the opportunity not to be closed down, but bringing an edge, higher education facility back into the neighborhood. Um, I can't say enough that how, how excited I am that, uh, BOE is proactive. I mean, I know our hospital aren't even get there as well, but as a city planner, I'm looking at two giant white elephants in our community that could be boarded up and sit still. So, um, whether it's, uh, uh, of course, I think it's a good decision. But whether it's a good decision or not, I applaud you for taking the initiative and moving forward and looking for opportunities to not leave these, um, uh, city, city buildings there, communities throughout the state that there are not community leaders that are standing up to try to find a solution. Uh, one of the things I want to echo that Lee said was, I think, any effort that, uh, DDA has put forth is as a stewardry law. Uh, we see ourselves as passing on any benefit, any rent, any opportunity, um, to, to empower, um, BOE in good decision-making because we go through two, you get our taxes too. We, we want y'all to be successful and we want to see the, the building being perfect.
I think, I think Mr. Whitby made a great point that I've learned by DDA, uh, over the past couple of years. It's, the idea is not to just maintain buildings, the idea is this building is property back on the top of us. And it's going to take a couple of years to study to be able to figure out what that will look like.
And I don't disagree with what anybody said. This is where we started with the soul projects, wanting to build this. I get a little uncomfortable when I see things about the BOE shall provide the payment for. We, we will renovate. We will be the ones that bears the expense. I kind of would like to know what some of that estimate would be before we go to meeting those type. I would love for it to happen tomorrow as well. I mean, this is something we talked about that we wanted done. Uh, but I get a little uncomfortable when I see things that are like a white check.
Sure. And I can't speak to the renovation for GMC. I think that is, as a representative, kind of a freshening up. Speaking of more of the monthly expenses, I, I think the chairman was absolutely correct when he said those were expenses that are going to be borne by the BOE anyway. Uh, so we don't want to have all the lights on and air conditioning running all the time. We have the DDA we pay for, we just want to have the bare minimum in there to maintain the status level, to prevent the mold and the deluge and those type of things. So, uh, for any use that we would have, we would want to have a tenant that was offsetting that cost that we would assume the DDA does. It's, it's a different thing as talk about costs. Uh, so if it's, if it's not a tenant that is paying rent or utilities, or we have the expectation that comes soon, then we would be doing a facial repair and then we would be paying. I don't know if that provides a comfort.
Well, we may not be paying that anyway. We, we want to keep it up and don't get it wrong, but for the city, we can buy the board for the non-tenant. So that's not a given to say that we wouldn't ask. I'm, 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 I'm good with where we are. I just would like to express my opinion of the board that we're kind of moving forward with the.
I, I mean, I just, I have a grid of the type of work that the contract that was presented from us that we need to sign. I, I like reading without signing. So, I mean, have you got a chance to read it? All right, we, we can, we can text it out to, to us next time. But, but how will that affect GMC? I mean, how, I mean, how will that, I mean, I, we don't need, lose a tenant. In the meantime, I just, I would like the rest of the board to agree, that we agree.
I know that Ed got to be there at the cost of coming back with, uh, GMC, you just take that on.
Uh, I'm not. GOC is ready to start at all of us. And we have committed that we would, uh, discuss this with the chairman, we've committed that we would do that basic renovation. I probably think it's going to be, you know, in top of Mr. Baller's, somewhere sixty thousand range. And it may not be that high, but, but just, just, just getting it so that they can operate it. And then that keeps the building occupied by group, maintained. We'll keep it under exterior maintenance. And then we'll, uh, we'll move forward with Boys and Girls Club, which y'all have applied for a grant. We're going to save some other areas of the building that would not be on us.
I don't want to hyper-cry it because I'm not that girl, but I'm another, I'm obviously a problem. So the City Council has agreed to, uh, eight thousand to its budget for the Great Island and the Great Amperity is getting paid for first. And there is a three-quarter million dollar grant for CDD, um, for Boys and Girls Club. And that's, that's what we're working on, so that's been added. Um, and, and we're anticipating that anything else we find a tenant, but the goal is to try to pass on the cost of, uh, even an O two to the tenant. Um, that's, the only number outlined from the issue remediation. Um, and that's, um, like we said, any, um, building that were, it was going to be torn down or adapted would, uh, be a remediation cost review. Um, for us, I, I had the same conversation with DDA. They don't want to write a blank check either, it's a very, very concerned about that. Um, as soon as we have, um, tighter estimates, we will bring this to you. Um, I think that we see this as the starting point. It probably won't be the last year, and it will probably change every time. Um, because our goal is not to maintain taxpayer, bear, bear the cost. It's much as possible, we're trying to find the economic development opportunity to pay for that. And, um, and we just wanted to capitalize on this, GOC's interests and their timeframe is driving our timeframe.
And this is really a discovery phase that, you know, however, this may lead us to an understanding that we totally demolish the building or we demolish parts of the building. But we're not going to be able to do that until we get into the free. And, and to me, the, the positive side of this, we immediately, you know, follow through with our commitment to the union that we're going to do everything we can to, to make sure of this, this, this part.
And I'm, I'm very excited. I don't, I don't not want that to be related whatsoever. Um, I just want to make sure that we're not looking at this six months from now, here comes a bill and go, where'd that come from? And, and you got to understand too, we are in the middle of a COVID situation, which as a effect on our economy, we're going to do budget talks and it all plays into that, so.
To be very conservative, I think that, um, and I'm probably stepping a little wide on, so I'll ask Lee to back me up if I've come too far. I think that the DDA would come to be very comfortable saying that they would engage in any remediation without a number and approval to proceed with remediation from you. That's going to be the big ticket number factor.
And it's that.
And.
So we're not saying, we're not signing a contract approving mediation immediately.
No, 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 no.
It's just an area of.
And what, what we're.
To allow us research for you.
We want to research it, find the number, and then within two years, um, we'll have that number, we'll have all the details. And it may be that, you know, that's cost prohibitive at that point, and you may want to put it into it, so that, that's okay too.
As long as we have an out of the agreement.
Yeah.
We wouldn't engage in any remediation without your consent.
We're just going to be the entity that does all the research for you, comes back to you and say, okay, this is what we found out. Here, here's some options, here's some options. Option A, option B, option C. We're not going to spend any money in terms of doing that, or the board's money, but turning anything down without coming back to the board. We'll, we'll just present it to you, then y'all decide on there.
The reason that remediation aligns in that, that contract, is, um, DDA is going to be able to provide remediation if we discover there's lots of it and we can't afford it either. So we're protecting city taxpayers as well, so we clearly understand your concern. Blank checks funding everybody's government crisis.
Yeah, and that, that's exercise for me, if we can come back and we're going to have that special, like, more needs, yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, who, who's maintaining, you know, basically, who's the liaison with GMC, maintaining contracts with them and maintaining liability? That is the DDA. The DDA is responsible for all that.
Yes, the DDA, I take on the unit control of property. Actually, actually, the city will take away the unit control contract. The city through an IGA will then task us with entering into a lease, and then we'll enter a piece agreement with you. So the DDA will be landlord through two IGAs, and there will be a tenant who will track it with there. And we're going to provide, we're going to provide.
Long as we're not, long as we're not having you the tenant, oh, we're going to track the landlord here, so, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's what you're not, staff, staff. We're the ones who make sure that the, that it's met and everybody's happy. And then also this is the one.
Lee, you drafted this, um, statement. Do you see any concerns as a taxpayer for our board long-term tying us down to any of our balance sheet or budget part?
I don't know. I think that before the DDA makes a move, they're going to, they're going to make a plan, but they're not going to order a, a roof removed, a remediation cost, asbestos, or anything like that, without going to the Board of Education. We're not, the business is spinning on the people's money itself. We're going to come to y'all beforehand, and that's going to be part of probably a lengthy proposal that includes several items, which is a future correction of the property, what the redevelopment looks like, what are the costs. So we're not, we're not setting out to endeavor to remediate this property right now. We're setting out to endeavor to create a plan of where do we get to where this is a marketable piece of property to be used by public and private uses. Hopefully, as Dr. Woodard said, some private uses that can be part of this type of tax. But we don't want to see more of those, we just, so we're just trying to get a plan to quickly split it back.
Now, I add one last thing. There, yeah, I always have one last thing. Um, there are remediation funds, um, uh, partial remediation funds for some of the white areas. Um, and we don't like to bring this as a song about areas, we got this neighborhood in this community, but it has some blighted conditions. And since it has blighted conditions, um, that does open, um, the DDA as a funding agency open to some funds. Any funds that we are able to procure, we definitely go to benefit our arrangement. Um, we don't, that, that, that's our goal with facilitators. And so we would hope that we would be able to procure some things that offsets that makes private property investment more possible.
Thank you. All right, thank y'all. Bring this down to action items. I'm sorry, I, I completely missed my report. All right, to action items, we're going to start with action item A, recommendation approved, financial report as presented. Okay, motion. Question, Dr. Magid?
Say it.
Secretary of Transit, we need further discussion. Owen Claver. Now, let's, thank you. Action out of B, recommendation to approve intergovernmental program between the City of Madison and the Metropolitan Organization regarding the middle school, the, the old middle school campus, uh, as we have discussed, uh, there for a while. Uh, recommend, uh, to approve that, uh, IGA, we're having a motion on that. Motion is planned, number seven. I'm staying with, uh, uh, I'm sure with the government, this is not giving us to spend money that we don't have, uh, against this. To, to do the, uh, process of, uh, discovery. What all we're going to have to do, and we got to deal with this guys anyway. It's not something we can pass on to someone else, we got to deal with, so.
I would love to read that, actually. That's my mistake, you know, if the board wishes for another direction, I'm on.
Okay, um, I would, uh, I'd like to take a time and, uh, we're finished now. So we can take it, or, uh, yeah, reset and, and, uh, But yeah, it's like, it's like, it's like, it's like.
If you have more questions, you can ask him. Please broadcast all of this. Let me take this. Actually, give me. I'll send you, I'll send you one. Nelson, do this. Are you pretty confident on that number ten that that they will dip, want to still have option back out of any remediation or anything?
Well, yeah, well, I mean, we're going to, like I said, uh, hack and look at doing something, but parts of it, I mean, we've got to, you know, we own it and and before we can sell, the past three years, we definitely do that. If we got, you know, some, uh, number difference, this, you know, what we were comfortable doing, uh, which we should have remediated, could, uh, look at, uh, you know, some other, um, alternative, uh, potential. I mean, yeah, like I said, we're not, we're not committing to, uh, you know, I guess it wasn't conveyed initially the right way as far as a blank check. I understand interpreting what was that way, but it's, like I said, really allow them to do the labor and research for us to see where we are going to be. Uh, where we can get building to have local tenants utilizing that. We already have, uh, two that that have stepped up, want to do it, but, uh, um, we do have to do some work. And again, we're going to have to do that with the market and sell it in the future anyway. Um, but there is, we know we've got some remediation we've got to deal with.
I am a little comfortable if they bring us what remediation is and make a decision on that. That was it. I just want to make sure we don't leave the remediation up, that they're research, that they're.
But that's the way I'm reading them too. I agree with what they're saying. I understand that. I read it. Shall complete all environmental remediation by the firms they hire. I mean.
Tens of, tens of years.
Yeah. I mean, they can say all they want, but they might not be here.
Um, shout with a strong word, be a shout. Well, we we are, I mean, it's possible. And whether it's in this I G A or or we try to do it ourselves, um, what they're doing is going to be doing research. We're not held to, uh, we can certainly get, uh, and they're going to get more than one or two, um, loads, but I'm saying we can, we can research that further good, but we are going to be responsible for, uh, uh, addressing whatever remediation has to be done with the school. We've, we've, we've got that liability. There's nothing we can do about that. We we own it and we've got to, uh, address that before we can command any buy.
That's, that's. And this is not beating over the property to them with that understanding. It's for them to spend two years or five years and discover things. But in the meantime, we have to put certain parts of the property.
Right. For the girls part of that.
Which is what's what our base of difference to the community to begin with was that we.
We don't want to have it. We've shot it for two years and, uh, following the district there before we got some, I think that was the big.
I agree a hundred percent with that. I don't think it's the tens of the hook up, but it's a B O E shall complete. And I know you say, we got to do it anyway, but I just want to make sure that we have a voice of what that is opposed to just.
Certain.
We're going to pay this.
We we, uh, I mean, we we now have work involved. Yes, some personnel will change their time, but I mean, they're don't want to work with us and 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 want to be a partner with us. Um, I, you know, we all have to have a level of trust at some point with uh, city, with the D D A, and I I certainly got that. I I hope, hope we all have have a level of trust from that. But, um, we do have to have something in mind for to do something. That's what the I G A is for. Uh, we we're not going to, you know, without them, as the player says, but they're going to bring it back to us before we do, before it even happens. But I, they can't go spend the money and then send us the bill. That's not, that's not.
But I think it it does read a little bit with shower. B O E shower, the time of transfer, make available. So I'm going to look at the time of transfer to mean that we're not transferring. We don't provide them. I mean, that's why I'm going to interpret that to say, we don't have, you know, they bring it to us to support the golf remediation. And at the time of transfer, we would make funds available if we decided the board, that's not.
That's not what we're, right.
And we're not going to provide this. And if we can craft a motion to satisfy, I'm always speaking for myself here, if we can craft a motion as part of that, in motion, I am okay with the rest of this.
The ten's going to get up. I'll do that.
So just just speak the motion just like that. So remember what I said? I'm recording it. So, okay.
Loud.
Ready, Mr.?
Yes.
Loud.
Loud? All right. So I make a motion that we approve the I G A with, uh, the understanding that it states in number ten that the B O E shall at the time of transfer make available to the authorities such funds. And that would mean that we have the option, um, of approving that in board for those funds that would be available for that.
We'll, we'll clean up language and make sure that you can. Lot of, lot of words.
Lot of words. So we have a motion, Mr. Howard, and I have a second. Second. Second, I have to propose discussion. All in favor? Yes, thank you. Nelson, I want to make a comment there, but I'm not about that. I I don't need this to be any, any confusion. I think you said it clearly that the Board of Education, me personally, we're extremely excited about a partnership with the D D A and the help they'll provide on the new tenants and the possibilities for that school to go on into town. Uh, that had nothing to do with that discussion. That was strictly taxpayer budget items going forward.
But I I think I could acknowledge that the D D A and the city has hammered out some very similar type of conversation.
And and I believe they'll, they'll.
It's a great partnership. It's going to be a great partnership going forwards and, but, you know, we all have our own role to play. Ours is on board education.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Uh, that's time to see. You clarify this in the middle school band equipment that surplus is requested by a principal employer. So. Second, motion, Mr. Anthony, second, this plan in further discussion. All in favor? End of this, I do. Action item B, recommendation where board policy, I H Q, motion for kitchen for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as was presented on this topic earlier. So, question, Dr. Padgett, is that second, Mr. Howard, in further discussion with all of. Now, is this, this is a one term or is this going forward?
Just for this year. To get us through the school year. It says for the twenty nineteen.
Right, good, thank you. Sure, and motion second, uh, vote on favor? Namus, thank you. Okay, action item B, recommendation to approve the personnel list, um, and like to got my chance to repeat that, but I'd like to add one amendment to it to go ahead and, uh, add our superintendent to this list so that we can go on that. You know, having a need for that concession, discuss it. So go ahead and add, uh, Dr. Virgil Cole to the personnel list as our new superintendent. All right, intent on motion to approve the personnel list. I suggest move through, motion, Mr. Howard, second. Second, the strange, in further discussion, all in favor? Namus, thank you. And enter the valley introducing.
Mr. Haley, there's, there is one more action item which was that. So we just do it away with the last action item?
That's what I took it in, in there. Where's the personnel list? Right, I need to fish with the personnel.
Thank you all. Um, it's definitely a tremendous blessing for me and my family. Just very excited. Uh, I want to thank you as a board for this opportunity. I'm certainly my whole thing to honor the future. Uh, I want to thank my wife, this is Molly Cole. And so, Molly, I would be here without my family and I'd love to love to support her and I'm here today. And, uh, you know, we we moved here for a reason, to special places, special people, and we realized that if you weren't just being here for a short time, we had. So I really am extremely excited and, uh, the service, community, the parents, students, uh, staff and administrators, just to be a part of that. Be part of this homework team. So I'm just very, very excited about that. So I really appreciate this opportunity and it's time to get started. I think we, we as a board are very excited to have you come on board and and, uh, looking forward to working here. Absolutely. Very nice to meet you, wife. Suppose we're not shaking our hands. Congratulations.
Thank you. Part of it, not being sitting here is just one of the system, one of the board of education, one of the community. Passing the gavel over to, uh, three capable candidates.
Well, I think we adopted in our system is from so many years and, uh, this will be a part of it. This is, uh, this is kind of a blessing.
Every night of the dollar that we.
I do carry this. I'll be, uh, my favorite transparent. So certainly have a vested interest in keeping, keeping a gun and building on success, keep that.
No, you will. We've got, you got a great, got a great staff here already that's going to be working with and, uh, I believe there's a movement moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Any, uh, other business?
No, sir.
Not now, all this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
I read.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, um.
Uh,
You're really terrible. We can't shake hands.